Good evening, Simi Valley. Welcome to this candidate's debate brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. This is the first of two forums tonight for Simi Valley. First, we're going to hear from the candidates for city council. There are two districts that are up for grabs in Simi Valley. We have two candidates from each of those districts. We'll introduce them in just a moment. As far as the League of Women Voters, it's my pleasure now to introduce the president of our local league, Betsy Patterson.
Good evening. I'm Betsy Patterson and the current president of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. 100 years ago, the 19th Amendment was ratified, giving women across the nation the right to vote. We hold the right to vote precious since not all people were given that right in the original constitution. And for 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been dedicated to encouraging civic engagement and informing voters about the candidates and the issues. From its beginning and continuing today, the league is a nonpartisan organization. We do not support or oppose any political party or particular candidate. Each of us has a voice in our government if we use our vote. To be informed voters, we must ask questions of the candidates and understand the pros and cons for each ballot proposition before we cast our vote. Thank you for joining us tonight, and we hope you have many of your questions answered by the candidates. Good night.
Thank you, Betsy. Before we begin, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen for a moment to show the community the actual districts tonight. We're talking about districts one and three. This is a map of Simi Valley. And you can see that District One is more towards the northeast area. And District Three is in this lighter green area off to the left. Simi Valley has four districts and then one mayor who is elected by the people who is representing all of the city. Of course, all candidates and all council members represent the entire city, but the four councilmen or women are elected by district. With that, let's go back to our program. And we randomly drew numbers earlier, and the order for candidates tonight will begin with Phil Luce, who's, if I'm pronouncing that right, Phil, as far as the opening statement. Phil, you have 1 minute 30 seconds whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Well, hi, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. You can always rely on you every COVID cell. We appreciate it. And thank you to everyone who was dialed in tonight to listen to five people talk about city policy for over an hour. That is commitment. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it. So, over the next hour, each one of us is going to share our vision and try to differentiate ourselves from our opponent. So I just want to take a moment to say that while I have significant philosophical differences and a different vision for our city than my opponent, I respect Councilwoman Kavanaugh greatly, and I appreciate her for her many years of service. My reason for running is not because I don't like her or that she's a bad person. I actually think she's really nice. But the reason I'm running is I see a great opportunity ahead of us if we change course now for the city. I'm running because I see an opportunity to improve the lives of people, of business owners, of families that I see getting left behind. And most of all, I'm running out of concern for what I perceive to be a lack of will or desire or vision to to change course, to put in the work, to be proactive in addressing our challenges before it's too late. So I hope tonight to clearly articulate why I'm the best choice to represent the city going forward. But I want to assure you that I am committed to hearing and representing every one of you, even if I never win your support. So we're truly into this together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Phil. Phil is a candidate for District One, and we'll now go to our next candidate, who is Ryan Valencia, and he's a candidate in District Three.
Thank you so much, David. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. As always, always the reliable organization to bring us all together. You know, hello to all the attendees, those that are watching currently and those later. As mentioned, my name is Ryan Valencia, and I'm a lifelong resident of Simi Valley, a product of our community. I went from Atherwood Elementary to Sinaloa to Royal High School, the best high school there is in Simi Valley. But my crowning achievement being Mr. Highlander 2012. But otherwise, came back home after college in order to help improve the community, have since then been a lifelong community volunteer from starting on the youth council at 16 years old to being on the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board, the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Historical Society, proud graduate of Leadership Simi Valley, serving on our homelessness task force in the city, and so on and so on. So, you know, to me, this is not really politics. To me, it's it's personal. It's about sustaining our community, not just for the residents here today. It's about sustaining it for the residents to come so that we can keep the promise of what our community is, not to change its character, but to maintain that character for everyone, whether it's our safe streets, our beautiful hillsides, whether our ability to just afford to live here for those young families just starting out. And so I hope to present a vision that's about the next generation of where we go from here, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our next candidate is DeeDee Kavanaugh from District One.
Thank you, David. I want to thank everybody for being here and for the League of Women Voters for once again holding your forum. It's always a joy to attend. For those of you that don't know me, I am currently our sitting council member, DeeDee Kavanaugh. I was elected to the council in 2016. Prior to that, I served for six years on the Rentshaw Simi Recreation and Park District Board of Directors. I love Simi Valley. That's why I'm here. I grew up here, raised my daughter here, my grandson's now being raised here. I believe we are a wonderful community. We are unique in so many ways, and I want to ensure that we keep that quality of life now and into the future. I have spent a lot of time in this community, both serving on nonprofit boards as presidents, board members, and as volunteers. I've also taken the time to get to know Simi Valley by attending Leadership Simi Valley class and becoming a Simi Valley Cert graduate, as well as attending the citizens academies. I'm a longtime Police Foundation member. Currently, that is being held against me in some realms, but I'm very proud of that fact. I believe number one quality here is our public safety. That's one of the things I will continue to ensure that we have well into the future. I'd like to wish all of my fellow candidates good luck to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Elaine Lister from District Three.
Thank you, David, and thank you, League of Women Voters. This really is an exciting evening to be together with and to hear the ideas of all these candidates and know a little bit about me that I love Simi Valley. I was the candidate that moved here with my five children because I needed a place where they could be safe, where they could grow, where they could prosper, they could live and love. And that's what Simi Valley is. It's that kind of a community that is a precious, precious commodity that we must preserve. Now, obviously, there's things we need to work on together to make it better and improve, but that's what this is about, is that sense of family. A little bit about me, I have a master's degree in urban planning, which technically means I know how to tell people where to put their streets, but more specifically, my area was social, social policy analysis, which means I studied ways that we could stimulate the growth in our community, but yet thrive and include everyone, have a bachelor's degree in economics, which means that I'm, that it's important for me to look at the finances and understand what's going on in our city with with regards to to the budget and the things that that control what we're able to do. Now, I could, there's lots of things I've done in the community, from PTA president to the league to helping my son get their eagles with projects that benefit the community from the cemetery to the to the to the local elementary. But really, what it's about is being involved together. I've been blessed to be appointed at city council a year and a half ago. I'm looking forward to four more years of actually doing some exciting things, and I look forward to this debate so we can discuss what that might look like together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're going to begin our first question with you, DeeDee. The question is about how, what are your plans to deal with the affordable housing crisis in Simi Valley? And more broadly, it takes so long to get housing built. So I'm sure you know that this is one of the big questions on Simi Valley residents' minds. Talk to us about your plans for housing.
Well, our, the first thing that we have to do is work with the developers that are willing to build the affordable housing. We currently have all of our RENA numbers laid out, so we have the properties where affordable housing can be built. So we need to reach out to those specific developers that are going to help us get there. Right now, that's been a little bit difficult due to the pandemic and things going on. There is a lot more building of single-family homes. That's what Simi Valley is known for, and so that's what a lot of the developers are coming to us with. As a city council, we are starting to reach out and have been reaching out to different developers and asking them, what is it that we can do to get you to bring an affordable housing development here? Are there things that we can help you with? Are there areas that you need to to work with us on? There's a lot of different things. But affordable housing also needs to be explained to the community. It's not just low-cost living. Affordable housing is another word for it. It's attainable housing. So you have to look at the income ratios of the people that live here, and we need to be able to develop properties so that they can rent and buy on their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, same question to you. What are your strategies for improving the housing situation in Simi Valley?
Thank you. Well, as as Councilmember Kavanaugh noted, the the RENA numbers that we have are quite daunting. Between now and 2028, we need to build about 2,700 or permit 2,700 units in the city. And of course, you know, the challenge is we have, we want to protect our open hills, which means we don't want to be building out, making a higher wildfire risk. We don't really need more single-family, large, single-family homes. What we really need is more infill. But the other issue is we have about 1% of the city that's available for for infill projects. So that means we have to look at redevelopment. And that does mean working with developers, being aggressive in trying to recruit them and find out what they what they need to get these projects through. But part of that is, you know, we made so many cuts in in our local government that it takes quite a while for for permitting to happen, and that's money wasted for anybody that wants to invest in our community. So we have to look at making sure that we're properly staffed, that we can get these things through quickly and make it a worthwhile effort for for the developers that may want to come here. But I see this as an opportunity to to build a walkable, modern downtown area that can serve as the economic hub for the city and provide affordable housing to a community that badly needs it.
Thank you. Ryan, we'll go to you next. What are your strategies for improving the housing situation?
Well, some points I've touched upon already, and especially just working with stakeholders in order to make it a reality. You know, when we continue to have these kind of sessions where we ask developers to bring back the project, bring back the project, bring back the project over and over again, that's an expense that goes on the developer. That's an expense that's going to cost that specific property to go even more. You know, part of the difficulties, and this is not just here in Simi Valley, but across the state of California, is just how how expensive it is to, before you even get the shovel into the ground. It shows initiate those initiative of of cost that goes through the permitting process that has to go through, making sure that they're meeting environmental standards. So making sure as much as we are as a community to streamline that process for those developers is incredibly important. And getting community concerns expressed over to those developers early on, rather than having these sessions that continue to drag out the entire process. I think that we know we need to make sure that our housing fits the character of our community. And I think that there is a bit of a stigma when it comes to affordable housing, when you look at what incomes are actually affordable housing. For example, $60,000 for what is considered low income, you know, those are some of our teachers. Those are some of our public safety officers just starting their careers. And so I think that we need to make sure that we're also not falling into this trap that it's somehow a downfall to our community and making sure that we know that our workforce, our workforce is dependent on this type of housing coming in and making sure that smart planning is part of that equation.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up this question with you, Elaine. Share with us your strategies for improving the housing in Simi Valley.
I think sitting on the on the seat council has been really an experience to see exactly what is being done now and what could be done in the future. I think people need to, first of all, be aware that there are projects in the pipeline right now that are going to be providing some of this housing that we desperately need. And in fact, I was just thinking as as we were having this discussion of three projects that I know that have been approved. For instance, there's a single-room occupancy project on Tappo Street that's been approved that will provide some housing for some of those those workforce that that Valencia, that Ryan has spoken of, that who are trying to get into the workforce housing right now. There's also a project as what people are from the farmer's project where that land's been cleared. What I'm excited about in that project is that is all for purchase property, and it's all targeted towards moderate-income purchasers. And so what we need is a mixture of of housing at all levels, and that's important to keep and keep our eye on. It's not all about one type of housing, and so I think that that's an important strategy. For instance, on Patricia, we approved a beautiful apartment complex where it which has low, low-income, moderate income mixed in with 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 regular market rates. So there's a lot of things in the pipeline, but that's what's important is that we have a variety of projects and look at it as a as a whole totality. One of the things I think is important, too, though, is that we must realize we have neighborhood councils. The whole development process allows neighborhoods to participate in what they want in their community, and then together we build together a community that we all love and can embrace and provides the housing that we need. So I don't want us to ever lose sight of that full process that we have uniquely in Simi Valley.
Have to stop you there. Ryan, we're going to start with you on the next question. There, there's been a lot of controversy in Simi Valley and across the state regarding mask rules and other things related to COVID. I don't want to get, I do want to get your perspective from the high level about what is your role as a councilperson in following state or national guidelines? What do you think is the right balance, whether it's COVID or other things? What, how would you see yourself if you're elected?
I think absolutely us as as elected officials, it's up to us to first demonstrate our commitment to what has been recommended, not only from, you know, state public health, but from our federal agencies overseeing public health, and that is the the mask recommendation. And so, you know, part of us is just exemplifying that first is ensuring that we're working with businesses to understand and educate us to why this is incredibly important. And so, you know, in terms of some of the more rigorous trying to calm down on on, you know, private citizens in terms of mask wearing, you know, part of what we're trying to do here is the social pressure. It's the, it's creating a standard, creating an environment in our community that we understand that wearing a mask is not only respectful for yourself and your own health, but the respectful for your neighbors as well. And that's really the point of what we're trying to do with the mask recommendation that we have and the health guidelines.
Thank you. And Elaine, if you're elected, how do you see your role when it comes to negotiating the differences between state and federal regulations that your community may or may not agree with? Where, how will you try to deal with these issues, much like masks?
Well, I certainly believe in obeying and honoring and sustaining the law. So whatever law is what we must obey. Now, I recognize that that we have been asked to wear masks and at the state level, and so I believe that that's critical for health, protecting ourselves, protecting those around us. And so I fully support that. Now, when there is, what I, I want to take this a little bit slightly different direction. I I think that I want to commend our businesses in Simi Valley. I think they've gone above and beyond to comply with safety regulations and making sure that they have a safe environment. And whether it be signage and whether it be six feet and precautionary measures for cleaning, et cetera. So I really want to reach out. In fact, as we look at the guidelines we just received from the county, our our performance as far as a city would have us not purple, which is what the county is, but red and orange. And I think we need to commend our citizens for all that they are doing. Now, do I believe that that there's been some heavy-handedness and that we have businesses that are suffering and desperately need to be reopened with safety precautions? Absolutely. I do not believe in disobeying the law, but I do believe in fighting for the rights of those who are being, I feel, unduly influenced and unduly hurt. And so personally, I've made it, I've written letters, I've spoke with people to find ways that we can operate safely with safety protocols, but people should not lose their livelihoods or nor their businesses. I think we can work together to make this safe for everyone.
Thank you, Phil. And can you share with us your thoughts about maintaining that balance between the community's desires and state and federal regulations?
Sure. Yeah, you know, I think this one is is pretty simple in the sense that our doctors are virologists. So whether we think a business should should be able to open or not, we need to be following the recommendations of our health experts, the specific targets that they've asked us to hit. But at the same time, I do think that we can advocate for our community. We can be educating about, you know, why these these goals are in place. We can also be listening to the community if there are real concerns that it's our job to advocate for those concerns and bring them up at the the county and the state level. I think we need to be modeling the behavior. We should all, you know, what what comes from the top goes to the rest of the city, and I think that's really important. But, you know, we're really close. We are one metric away from moving from the purple to the red tier here. And so just stay the course. We're we're almost there. And I know it's difficult to be patient through this time. There's a lot of people suffering. But I think our role is as a as a city council member would be to educate, model behavior, be transparent, and advocate for the community.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up this question with you, DeeDee, as far as share your thoughts about what the proper balance is with a council member and regarding state and federal regulations.
Thank you. I agree. We are the leaders of the community. People are looking to us for leadership. They're looking to us to see how we are reacting to what's being asked. The mask wearing, they've they've proven it is helping us eliminate the COVID. It is something that we've all gotten used to doing. I actually oversee branches that are essential workers, and my, all my employees are required to wear masks the entire time they're in the building. And it, at first, it was a little bit difficult for them, but now it's become a way of their normal day. And I'm proud to say we've had no COVID breakouts in any of my 11 branches. So by following the proper protocols that the county is giving us, by following the recommendations on what to do and how to do it, I think we're doing a great job in our county, like was mentioned earlier. We're only one metric away, and that metric, we're so very close. And the only reason we're not within is because we're testing more than anybody else. So Ventura County is doing more testing, so our positivity rate is is a little bit higher. But we're working with the county is, right now, the county is currently working with the state to try and get that some consideration given in that matter. We need to move forward safely. I see businesses suffering, and we need to do what's what's best for them, as well as what's best for the entire community. So hopefully, we'll be able to move down into the next level and reopen our businesses.
Thank you, Elaine. I'm going to start the next question with you. This question deals with the business part of Simi Valley and the economy. What are some of your thoughts about improving the situation with this Simi Valley Town Center? And what would you do to attract new businesses and retain the ones that are here?
I appreciate that. I, we, that town center could be such a jewel for our community. I should mention that I am a small business owner here in Simi Valley, so I know what it takes to bring a business here and to make it operate and and all the hoops you need to jump through. But there are some wonderful things that we could do, businesses that could be brought to the Simi Town Center. Now, if I had my magic wand, and I know the management has changed, and they ultimately get to guide what they would like for their, for their, for their purchase, their mall. But with my magic wand, I would personally turn that into a, an event entertainment destination. We have lovely foods, restaurants there. I would, I would, I would play upon some of the things that are starting to happen there. For instance, the esports. I know that owner there would love to have an esports arena. I know that there's dance studios that are there. I think it'd be lovely if we could turn maybe the men's Macy's into a performing art venue that could be turned into also a banquet facility, et cetera. So if I had my magic wand, I would turn that into an event activity destination that was a hub and center for the community to gather and and perform and enjoy and recreate and have a lovely time together. Now, I realize that takes some effort and and working together. It takes the city can partner with the developer who's purchased it with parks and recreation. It could be a collaborative effort, and really, that jewel on the hill could be a wonderful place where we could all gather and love to spend our time and be quite proud of. And so I look forward to where, where and what we could be doing with that beautiful town center. Thank you.
Thank you. DeeDee, same question to you. What are your thoughts about the town center and also about attracting new business and retaining the ones that we have?
Thank you. It's funny, Councilmember Lister and I have never discussed this, but that's where I'm going with the same thing. I mentioned it in my Brown Bag Lunch speech on Friday with Royal High School. There are malls and shopping centers in the Midwest that are completely entertainment-related. Nowadays, we don't need the big box stores. We are buying online, unfortunately, for our small business. But for the, for the big ones, we're buying online. They don't need the 40,000-square-foot Macy's, which is the empty one, and they haven't needed it, and they're still getting their sales. So I would like to do that. The prior owners of the mall were not interested in doing anything with it other than building apartments. That's all they wanted to do, and the city council, I'll be honest, we fought them. We said, no, we're not going to go there. That's not what we want it to be. So they pretty much just let it go and did nothing to improve it. We do have new owners now. Hopefully, they're going to be able and willing to work with us at the city. Councilmember Lister mentioned the different things. I think that would be ideal, even if we have to do some housing up there in order to get the entertainment in. It would be a win-win if we could make it reasonably priced housing, meet some of our RENA numbers, and at the same time, make everything an entertainment destination, because people in Simi Valley like family entertainment. That's one of our favorite things. So if we can do that up there, I think we'd have a winner for sure.
Thank you. Ryan, let's hear your thoughts about the town center and attracting new businesses.
Yeah, absolutely. This question makes me excited, not only because the third district council member has the Simi Valley Town Center in their district, and it's a very important economic development corridor, but also because I'm just a firm believer that an economic development plan really needs to be in place moving forward, and the Simi Valley Town Center is critical to that. You know, I agree with a lot of the sentiments I have and express. There's a couple of questions that we have to answer. One is how do we keep the Simi Valley Town Center to have not just nighttime traffic, but daytime traffic? Just to have that consistency of business throughout the day. So whatever project that is presented, that that is a central question that we need to ask. On top of, how can, how can we meet this challenge, right, of of both online retail going on? On top of companies like Amazon that do sell data to retail, telling them what the surrounding community sizes are, what their tastes are, which actually, you know, results in them limiting inventory specifically to that what customer bases. And we're seeing a lot of these trends in malls happen, not just the Simi Valley Town Center, which frankly, was always going to struggle because it's between Topanga and also the the TO mall as well. And in TO, we're starting to see some of those vacancies arise, too, and having to replace with more local stores. So those are some of the factors that we have to go in going forward. If there's a residential component, I definitely do not agree with making that entire town center residential. If we can mix it in somehow, you know, that's fantastic. I'd like to see that project. But very much, all these questions have to be answered, but it should be the entertainment capital of our entire.
Thank you, Ryan. Phil, we'll wrap up with you. What are your thoughts about revitalizing this Simi Valley Town Center and attracting new businesses?
It's always fun to go last because everybody takes the good stuff. No, I I think everybody's kind of on the right track with this. There, the evidence is overwhelming that, you know, mixed-use type developments are the the future. That mixes in corporate office, entertainment, retail, and housing. And frankly, I'm the elephant in the room is the housing piece. It is what helps to sustain the economic health of a city. I'll just quote Matthew Fineup. He's a an economist over at Cal Lutheran University. He has raised this alarm bell many, many times that we will not have the type of growth that we want, the economic growth we want, and remain and sustain our businesses here unless we we tackle that issue. So, you know, as far as the town center is concerned, it will probably have to have an housing element, but it can't just be slapping a bunch of houses there and think that's going to solve a problem. We do need to have it mixed up, especially involving some, some entertainment and experiential aspects to it is critically important. But I think the larger question is, you know, it it may not be the town center that is where we we choose to to put all our eggs. It may be somewhere closer to the middle of the city. There may be another project that is more right for that type of development to sustain the businesses. So, you know, we'll do our best to to revitalize that area, but we may have some other opportunities that are even more promising.
Okay, Ryan, we're going to stay with you. Let's take a step back and just learn a little bit more about you as a candidate. Tell us what are some of your priorities if you are elected, and also tell us what you think separates you from your opponent in District One.
District Three. Yeah, well, some of my priorities include economic development, like I've mentioned, not just in terms of economic corridors that we should have, whether it's the Simi Valley Town Center or along the Los Angeles Avenue area. But additionally, taking a look at where can we increase workforce development? Where can we partner as a city with our school district, with our Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce in order to make sure that we're keeping up with high-quality, high-paying jobs that keep up with the cost of living in this city? So, you know, when we take a look at sectors like manufacturing, when we take a look at, you know, the trade sector, those are incredibly important jobs that are are great paying. And additionally, I'd like to take a look at how we can increase innovation, entrepreneurship. I'm the proud co-founder of the Simi Valley Business Incubator Committee, and that stems from our work on the YES Board, which I've been a proud member of for a number of years. And so that Business Incubator Committee is to establish a place where startups can come. Where can we attract some folks, those those entrepreneurs coming from Amgen's downsizing? Maybe we can attract biotech. Maybe we can attract, you know, next-generation manufacturing here in the city of Simi Valley. So thinking about what that next-generation economy is going to look like. I'm a big believer in environmental protection and conservation of our hillsides, which is another big priority for me. Whether it's, you know, we've been proud of to work in the, in my time in the legislature on protecting our groundwater, on progress on the Santa Susana Field Lab, on conserving our our open space. And so those are some of the priorities that I would list.
Thank you. Elaine, if you were elected, what would be some of your priorities and what do you think sets you apart from your opponent in District Three?
Thank you for that question, David. And I appreciate the things that my competitor Ryan has mentioned, and he's doing some very good things. But I think what differentiates me is my understanding of the realities of 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 what it takes to to affect positive change and the timeframe and some of the skills that it takes. I will tell you that when I people joke, why am why is she your candidate? I use that acronym. S stands, first of all, I recognize the reason people are here in Simi Valley is they want a safe, secure community. And so my support for the police and certainly what's being done to keep us a safe community is is premium. And that also extends beyond just the safety of police. For instance, I have some ideas for some of our improving improvements of crossing guards. Places where we've had horrible accidents near schools that need to be rectified. And so that's all part of safety that I would want to address. H, health. We need a fa- a positive health for our businesses and for and our individuals. And that that can be done certainly through business incubator, etc. But what one of the things that I would be excited and would love to do is to possibly investigate things such as enterprise zones. Ways to actually stimulate and and give businesses a way to to possibly have a seed to improve their storefronts and a way that we can partner together to to grow a beautiful community. Finally, economically, it's not all about money taken, not all about the budget or or rev excuse our expenses. We also need to look at our revenue side. There are some things that I'd love to do and can do that will actually help increase our revenue for our community. And maybe we'll get to that since my time's up. I'll tell you that later.
Thank you. Okay, DeeDee, same question to you. What will be your priorities if elected and what do you think separates you from your opponent?
My prior priorities this election are almost identical to what they were four years ago. Number one is public safety. I'm a very strong supporter of our Simi Valley Police Department. And I will not vote for any defunding of our police department. Currently, they do have 49% of our our budget, but that is 95% of that is salary based. So by utilizing the new technologies and such, we may be able to decrease salaries and personnel and personnel numbers through attrition by utilizing the new technologies. I've spoken with the chief of police and the city manager and the union rep in regards to that. Second of all, I think I'm for controlled growth. Simi Valley is known as a suburban town. We are single family homes. But we do have a need for multifamily housing, but I believe it needs to go in the areas where it fits. And I would look at it individually, project by project. For example, the one four story apartment building doesn't really fit where they want to put it. But is there a different location we could we could place it where it would? That would be number two. Number three, we have differences in how we want to grow our economic growth. I believe in bringing in more businesses, utilizing and protecting our current businesses. We currently have a $6 million savings put aside to help our businesses through the economic downturn. And so I think the city is going to do the best we can.
Okay, thank you, Phil. We'll wrap up this question with you. What are your priorities if elected and what do you think separates you from your opponent?
Sure, yeah, I think the number one priority, I've touched on it several times and I'll touch on it again, is the revitalization of the Simi Valley economy by prioritizing, you know, mixed use developments and projects that include workforce housing. It is going to be critical. And yes, controlled growth, yes, we want to make sure it fits with the community, of course. But we do need to be more aggressive and I think we have seen a lack of urgency on that that front. That is really holding us back. I think we need to attract a younger and more diverse workforce that is necessary to encourage startups and to sustain our existing businesses. I want to make sure we're addressing our budget challenges by increasing the revenue streams that we have. That's a huge challenge for us as Calpers. Obligations are are skyrocketing. I want to make sure we're improving government transparency by increasing the the quantity and the quality of the lines of communication with the general public. A lot of people don't know what's happening in this city or or why we're making the decisions we're making. And so, you know, those are my top priorities and is the differences. You know, I think the difference has come across in in our in our campaigns. I have worked my tail off since last year to to get this 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 role. I have been transparent, holding biweekly town halls to make myself available to the public. And I have worked extremely hard to show what my vision is and have been very clear about that. And I think that's a major differentiation between the two of us.
Thank you. DeeDee, we're going to start with you on the next question. I'm sure all of you know this is in the news and have probably been thinking about it deeply, but there's been a lot of issues within Simi Valley recently regarding social equality, racial injustice. The Mike Judge situation, as pointed out by one of our questioners. So at the 50,000 foot view, I mean, what are some of the policies that you would promote to ensure inclusiveness on the council, in the city? And also, do you think the Mike Judge situation was handled appropriately?
I'll I'll start with the second part of that question first, the Mike Judge situation. I do believe it was handled correctly by the city council. We had a similar problem or concern with another council member in the prior year, and the same type of situation was brought before us. We discussed it openly with transparency. It has to be an agenda item to do that. The council decided to not do anything other than a reavow of our code of conduct based on the situation. This second situation, I actually am the one that called for, quote, a censure to be put on the agenda. That's so we could discuss it. We again had an open discussion and the council had vehemently been against what was posted and we had all been stating that more than one time. So we did take it a step further than we did the first time with the other council member. We did a disavow. So we did as a as a member, as a council, say it was unacceptable. We don't agree with it. We don't want it happening again. In regards to the overall, it's been challenging for everybody, I believe. People keep saying our reputation precedes us. That's been something that we're going to need to look at at a higher level. Is there something that we need to do as a city to help that reputation go away or to alleviate it? I believe we're trying the best that we can at this point in time. And I'm running out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Let's hear your thoughts about what you think the city can do to ensure inclusiveness on the council and in the city? And how would you, do you think the Mike Judge situation was handled appropriately?
Sure. Well, you know, whether you believe the reputation of our city is earned or not, the fact that this question is even being asked today shows that the reputation exists and we need to do something about it. We we could hand wave it away as you know, misinformed opinions of people, but that ignores our residents of color who have spoken up and told their stories and are asking for us to do something and to make this a more inclusive environment. So I believe it's in the best interest of our city to address this head on and show that we take it seriously. And there are all kinds of things that we can do. Whether it's establishing a regular forum to consult with various community leaders in order to take regular stock of the situation and our progress on our goals. Something as simple as recognizing February is Black History Month, using that to educate our residents about about black history. Hosting a food festival with cooking from all over the world to promote cross cultural understanding. There are all types of ideas that we could be doing that are specific and and not just a general, you know, racism is bad and that's the end of it. We need to do more. We need to be specific and proactive. And as far as the Mike Judge situation is concerned, I would have voted for a censure. If we're going to say we have no tolerance for racism, we should have no tolerance for racism.
Thank you. Elaine, we'll go to you next. Please share with us your views about how to promote inclusiveness on the council and in the city. And do you think the Mike Judge situation was handled properly?
First, I'd like to explain a little bit about my family. I have a multiracial family. I have five adopted children. Two are of Hispanic background. I have a, my daughter's married to a wonderful African, beautiful man from Ghana, beautiful black grandchild that we have. I I believe that my family is indicative of what Simi Valley is, which is a melting pot of wonderful people from all sorts of backgrounds, countries, ethnic background, a diverse, we just have a very diverse, wonderful community. Now, it saddens me when I hear of instances where someone might feel might feel that they have been wronged and discriminated against, and we need to do everything in our power to eradicate any of anything that is discriminatory in any way. I do feel actually that the city is is listening and is hearing and is taking steps to be sure that there is inclusiveness. For example, I sit on the Cultural Arts Festival. I know that in their plan, they have a master plan where they have some of the things that have been discussed of being done. They have some wonderful ethnic festivals being planned, art arts, varied arts groups or arts displays being planned. So I think there's things we can do that we're starting to do. I was appreciative to hear that Officer Living, that Chief Livingstone is having an open forum where he can have open discussion. And that's that's happening next month. So I think we're doing things. With regards to Mike Judge, we we passed a resolution of disavow. It was, it is not all right. We must must be inclusive, abrasive. Thank you.
Ryan, going to wrap up with you. Please share with us your thoughts about promoting inclusiveness. And do you think the Mike Judge situation was handled properly?
Well, thank you for this question. And I know that it's incredibly pertinent, you know, we're dealing with a lot of the reactions to the beyond a tailored case currently across the nation. And so, you know, I first want to applaud the response of leadership in our police department, particularly Chief Livingstone, as well as Commander Shorts, who have really done an incredible job, not only in how we handled, you know, the protests that have occurred in our community, but additionally, the aftermath, including that outreach and to those citizens who have tried to bridge the gap with the police department in an active discussion. Because ultimately, that is the key to go forward. You know, I got a question recently in a in a community forum in regards to what would I tell someone to who who's accusing racism of happening to them in in the city? And the truth of the matter is, their truth is their truth. And as a council member, it's important to us to listen and not tell them how they should feel as to what is currently going on in our country. The third district is home to the most diverse population in the city. And so part of our my job going forward is going to be to be a bridge between local government and the constituents that we represent. And so, you know, one thing that I recognize is that we're going to have to partner with the NAACP and LULAC, incredible organizations here in Ventura County going forward. Work with the Cultural Arts Center, work with how do we increase the diversity component of what community services do and bringing them to the fold? You know, all those aspects of the cultural. Okay.
Stop you there. Sorry, candidates. Okay, let's move on to the next question. And we're going to begin with Ryan. Ryan, as far as climate change, this is certainly a global issue. But that doesn't mean that the state or at the city that different things can take place. So share with us your view of climate change. Do you accept that? And do you think there are certain things that can be done? And what would you try to advocate for in Simi Valley?
That's a fantastic David, question David. And I would start with just a simple statement that I believe that climate change is real. And here in the state of California, we've been at the forefront of a lot of these these issues in terms of dealing with climate change. And it is imperative on every single community across the state and across the country in order to have a discussion and to set goals as to how we're going to meet that. You know, one of the proposals that I've put forth is actually modifying our climate action plan. This was actually supposed to be updated back in January. I'm not sure why the climate action plan has not been updated when it has been put as a deadline. But ultimately, I would like to see us put a date as to when we can be a zero carbon emissions city. You know, how do we get there? It's going to be an incredibly great discussion. I think that there's going to be strategic investments that we need to make in renewable energy. You know, when we're talking about the the wildfire seasons that have gone just beyond just a season. But throughout the year, as our firefighters have recognized, and I'm proud to have their endorsement for that reason, but they've recognized that, you know, this is due to climate change. And so it's an emergency management issue too. And when we're having these public, these these public safety power shut offs, as they're called, you know, investment in micro grids. Invest in how we can have battery storage and making sure that we can isolate a lot of the impacts of those shut offs. All these are intertwined into how we respond to that climate action plan.
Thank you. Elaine, same question to you. What's your views on climate change? Do you believe in that? And also, what would be some of the strategies you'd put in place in Simi Valley to try and combat that?
Well, in short, I I believe the the climate is always changing. Let's be, let's be real, whether it's 100 degrees or or not, I do believe certainly there that that change is afoot in our climate. Now, whether that means we need to completely eliminate certain power sources we've had, I think we need to look very carefully. I was very troubled. I might say that I serve on Southern California Area Government's Energy and Environment Committee. And so on that committee, we sit and discuss just exactly what we should be doing with energy production and and how it affects our environment, etc. And of course, climate fits into all of that. But I I wrote a letter of great concern to that committee when just recently, two weeks ago, when it hit temperatures for long temperatures over 100 degrees, all of a sudden, the response was that we that they had brownouts and there were power shut offs that affected millions of people. Now, it is very, very, they're doing research to decide why that's the case. But there's the concern that by going completely to green energy, which is solar and wind, which is based on natural environment, that you may have lost the opportunity to have continual energy. I think we need to be very wise in our in our footprint and what we're doing so that we don't bring ourselves to a point where, for instance, we have people who who are dependent upon life support systems and the power go out simply because we've taken the steps. So I think we need to work together, certainly, to have bring safe energy and make steps that will make sure that we have prolonged energy for everyone, but opportunities that won't affect negatively our citizens.
And Phil, we'll go to you next. What are your views on climate change? And do you think there are some policies you can put into place in Simi Valley to help combat it?
Yes, climate change is real. It is different from weather. The climate is, climate change is because of the carbon that humans are putting into the atmosphere. And it is our responsibility to change course. You know, we have, our our council, I feel, has paid lip service to this. And just an example, we have an alliance or a partnership with the Clean Power Alliance. We had the option to default to 100% green renewable energies where, you know, people could still pick a lower rate if they wanted, but we chose to go for the lowest rate. When we could have really taken a big step forward to be using renewable energy in the city. You know, I think we should be having a target for when we want to be shifting over to to be carbon neutral in the city. A lot of cities have done this and it has allowed them to put forward a plan to get there. And so, you know, I think Ryan mentioned it, but having a target date really will help to push this forward. But I think that reducing car reliance through smart city planning is something that we can do. Ensuring that new construction meets the green standards for efficiency. But we absolutely need to be doing our part because this is an existential existential threat to our community as the wildfires increase more and more every year. We are surrounded by hills that are just full of dry brush that makes us especially endangered. And it's our responsibility to do something about that.
Thank you. DeeDee will wrap up with you. What are your views on climate change? What do you think the city can actually do to combat it?
Thank you. Yes, climate change exists as well as the weather changes. Ryan pretty much mentioned the with the fires. My son-in-law is currently on a search and rescue team up in Chico because of the fires. And so our fire management, our forestry management needs to be better in order to help maintain our our forests and lower fires. But we also have to look at all of the different types of things that the city is currently doing. We have won seven several beacon awards for our sustainability here in the city of Simi Valley. The average person might not realize that. That's something that we're very proud of. We currently have solar in our parking lots at both City Hall and the police department and in our transit department. Our transit buses are environmentally safe as far as we can go at this point in time. So the city is doing a lot of different things. Can we still improve? We can always improve on anything. Some of the ideas I've heard from you all, I'm like, oh, that's a good idea. Why don't we look into that? So that's kind of what's good about this too. So we've, we're doing a lot. There's always more to do. I do worry about the PSP, the power PSPS, the power shut offs. That that can affect our hospital. We had to look into separating their circuits so that if we have the rolling blackouts and brownouts, the hospital won't be affected because that really does damage to their machines that come up and down. So there's a lot of different areas that we're looking at. There's areas that we're going to be looking at, especially after this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to the next question. And Elaine, you'll be up first. I've been doing forums in Simi Valley for many years. And this question comes up frequently and it's about the Santa Susana Field Lab. I'm sure you're all well prepared for this. But here we are still, the Santa Susana Lab, fighting with NASA, fighting with others to get that cleaned up because many people are concerned about the pollution. So Elaine, please share with us, what are your views on the Santa Susana Field Lab? And what do you think is the next step forward?
You know, I have, well, in a You know, I have, well, in a nutshell, we've got to do something about getting it cleaned up immediately. It is, it is a travesty that it's taken so long. I'll be very honest. I've had the, the privilege of touring that facility. It's a, it's a beautiful site. It is so unfortunate that, that the partners that are up there have not taken actions to begin to clean up immediately. It was interesting, when I moved here many years ago, my father actually worked for the government, I don't know, Nuclear Engineering Laboratory. He wanted to know where in Simi Valley I was moving because he had a colleague who was, worked at that site and had some health repercussions and he was concerned for me. And so I'm not saying that certain areas of our city are unsafe, just that I'm aware, I've been aware before even moving here, that the Santa Susana Field Lab needs, needs our time and attention. Now, of course, the city doesn't have direct, direct oversight of that in any way. It is entirely the federal government and with states' influence, but that something can be done. Now, what we can do is we can write tirelessly to our representatives and to those involved that we want something done and what it should look like. Right now, there's a discussion about Native American rights and what that means for cleanup. And so that needs to be resolved. Of course, sacred grounds need to be protected, but we must make that area a place that's safe for all of our residents and for, for future children and generations to come.
Thank you. Same question to you, DeeDee. What are your views on the Santa Susana Field Lab? What do you think is the best way to move forward?
Like Councilmember Lister said, we can enforce it and go after our Congressman. Congressman Garcia, it's like, we need you to get moving on this. The city itself doesn't have the authority or the, the right to do it. But the Fed and the state have put up way too long. They, they have gone back and forth and said, well, you're responsible for this and you're responsible for this. Well, that's, you know, that's like doing this, and that needs to stop. I don't know, well, I do tend to think that there have been some problems, some health-related problems from that. I had three young men that all developed leukemia that all lived in the area. So that was kind of offsetting your three friends that I know. So that, that's always been in the back of my mind. I get there. The city, we have called for a full cleanup. We've done it already. We're going to continue to do it. And I, and I, I'm not sure exactly how far we can go, but I think just really going with our Congressman, with even other Congress people in the other areas that surround us, they're going to be the ones to get stuff moving. If we have to do something citywide, if we have to get a change.org going, those are the things that maybe we need to do in order to show the Fed and the state that we want this cleaned up and we need it done now. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to go to Ryan next for your views on the Santa Susana Field Lab. And what do you think can be done?
Well, this is a year after year after year question because we haven't seen any progress in decades. And so it's no wonder why it always comes up. You know, very much so, it is agency pointing at agency. You know, I think we like to focus on Boeing, who is a concern. But additionally, taking a look at DTSC, which is a state agency involved, as well as Department of Energy, as well as NASA, who all don't want to go to the cleanup standards that have been set by the 2010 agreement that was set. And so that is a major concern, you know, from the, from, from DTS standpoint, DTSC's standpoint. We haven't seen them move forward in terms of their environmental impact statement approvals that they should have done. We haven't seen them go forward with the Soil Remediation Plan approval that federal agencies have put forth. But at the very least, we have to see something. And so part of our job on city council is really to be an advocate at every single step of the way, not just when those plans are presented, but additionally, when those review processes come forward, when those agencies are putting under consideration. Because it is heartbreaking to sit with, you know, moms who are concerned about the health of their child having possibly been affected by the site. We have to be a watchdog for that soil extraction when that remediation plan gets approved and where it's going, you know, and how the wind impacts that on surrounding neighborhoods in that area. So being a watchdog for those transportation lines. We have to be watchdogs for the, for groundwater that folks have been concerned about for the contaminants.
Thank you, Ryan. Phil, we'll wrap up with you. What are your views on the Santa Susana Field Lab? What do you think can be done?
That was a fantastic answer from Ryan, and I think he covered pretty places. But I will just add that advocacy for the community does not just mean going to our, our state senators or to our representatives, but it also means showing up in person, showing that we care enough to be there when NASA or DOE or whoever comes out to try to convince the community that a full cleanup is not necessary, that we're there by their sides to say, stop, enough, no, we are by your side as, as a community, and we are demanding a full cleanup as well. And I have been there. When NASA came out, I think it was to the Best Western, Madera, and had an event to try to, you know, basically convince the public that we could do this with less than a full cleanup. I was there, with my support, because this is incredibly important. When we talk about public safety, we often think about the police, and that's very true. But I think about the health of our population. It's also part of public safety. And we need to be just as serious on this as we are on other aspects of, of public safety. So I think advocacy means showing up, showing that you care, listening and being tireless in your, your advocacy for the, for the community.
Thank you. Phil, we'll start with you on the next question, but several of you mentioned our federal representatives. If you are wondering out there in Simi Valley, the League of Women Voters is trying to host a forum with the candidates Mike Garcia and Christie Smith in the 25th Congressional District. The League will not host a forum unless both candidates agree to participate. We are working on that. We're trying to get them to find time in their schedules to join us for Simi Valley issues. We may end up combining with Santa Clarita to host it, but we are working at it. It's just, they're both busy and we'll just hope that some pressure comes and that they'll agree to come up and, or at least join us online. But we are working on it because we know you want to hear from them. Phil, we're ready to move on to the next question. And it's quite possible that these elections in these smaller districts could be decided by those people who, as of today, are still undecided. So what would you say to those undecided voters? What is your message to them? What will you do differently if you're elected? What do you think is the best way to work with your colleagues in the future?
Well, the last part of that question is particularly important. So I wanted to start with what I think are characteristics of an effective council member. I think that an effective council member relentlessly advocates for the community, is tireless and works very hard, shows up. I think they find every opportunity possible to build bridges with their colleagues and with the public. I think they're always prepared when they come to meetings and they ask tough questions of any proposed changes that the city might be adopting to make sure they're making wise decisions. You know, I think they make decisions based on best practices and evidence to inform their decisions. And if they are confronted with evidence that, you know, can contradict them, their, their held opinions, that they, they'll change it. They'll be open to change. I think they are patient and understanding and have a thick skin. And I think this describes me. In my career, I have always been a bridge builder. My first job was as a patient advocate to resolve really complicated situations at the hospital where you had people who really disagreed about what happened, to bring them together to find a solution. And I think it's incredibly important that, that whoever is up on the council has the ability to continue to work in a productive manner with the other council members that are up there. And that's, that's a huge priority for me. I've shown that throughout my career. And I've shown as well that my, I have a tireless work ethic throughout this campaign. And that's exactly what I would bring to the council. And as, I think my vision as well is, sets me apart as well. Thank you.
Thank you. DeeDee, same question to you. I mean, if you're reaching out to the undecided voters, what would be your message to them? What do you think is the things that might happen differently in the future to bring together the community? And how will you work with your colleagues to address some of these differences that have come up over the last couple of years?
I think we, as a council, have started to work better together. We had some strength or some, some times when nerves were a little bit frayed. But I think we are learning to work with each other and, and get along a lot better. In regards to, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again real quick, David?
I mean, what is your message to the undecideds? What will you do differently and how will you work together?
Thank you. The message to the undecided is, I've been a city council member for the last four years. But this past year, we've gone through a pandemic that we've never gone through before. So we have unforeseen problems that are going to crop up over the next four years, if not longer. So my experience as a sitting council member, in my experience in my career, you know, I have finance and budgeting, I oversee branches throughout the county. And I've got a lot of time where I've gone out into the community and asked and, and been active there. What can I do? What can we do as a city? What would you like to see done? I think those things are all going to be important. And the, the people that are the undecideds are going to see the difference in me in that I have long time supported, public safety has been number one for our community. I'm the leader there. Economic development, I actually sat on the SHOP Simi Valley Committee way back when, when it was first started. So economic development, I bank small businesses. So I know what they're going through and I'm going to be able to utilize that knowledge to help us as a city get through.
Thank you. And Elaine, we'll go to you next. So when you're reaching out to these undecided voters, what is your message? What will you do that you think will show that you're a different type of candidate? And also, how would you address some of the differences that have shown themselves on the council?
Well, I think I want people to remember my name, Elaine Lister, and Lister listens. And so I want you to know that I have gone out and tried to go out of my way to listen to every, every individual, every business owner, every, every person who has a need and, and something that needs to be addressed, the city. For instance, just a week ago, we had, we discussed whether or not we would modify our bee ordinance for the city. That came about because a year ago, some people approached me who are bee growers and really wanted the possibility of maybe having it in a, in a different setting. And so I will listen to bee growers. Today, I had a conversation with a gentleman who's concerned about the placement of his mailbox with his neighbor. I'll listen to those kind of issues. I will listen to, in fact, I know I was instrumental with a restaurant owner who was trying to set up an outdoor patio and wasn't getting the response with the city. I listened and within two days, it was done the way she wanted. There was an athletic trainer who was having a problem. And also, I listened to that case. I want you to know that, that distinguishes me. I promise you, I will listen. My message to the undecided is that I do work with my colleagues. I often, and I, I will tell you, I've approached all four of my colleagues privately when it's appropriate about instances to work together because that's the only way you get things done. And finally, I will dig. I'm the one to ask questions and, and maybe too many, but I'm always looking for information about what's going on. For instance, I found a hundred thousand dollars in a contract that the city had missed. I'm the one that will keep digging and keep working for you.
Thanks, Elaine. Ryan will wrap up this question with you.
Absolutely. And, and it's a great question because I think this forum itself is kind of an example of how we all work together. As much as there's theatrics all the time and politics is politics. Funnily enough, I have had phone calls, text messages with all the people in this forum because that's the type of relationship that I believe in and I think that we all believe in. I think we're all very nice people. You know, when it comes to what I would say to our undecided, is really taking a look at council and take a look at what's missing. And that's why I decided to run. On one end, I am a homegrown candidate. This is my hometown. It's, the reason I'm running is because I love my hometown. I know officers because they went to high school with me. I know the teachers because they taught me. I know the business owners because I frequented them since I was a kid. So I come from a perspective of what Simi Valley's promise is, of what are qualities that we love and why my parents left LA to move out here. And additionally, I come from the perspective of somebody that's going to face the long-term consequences of our decisions. I believe that I've set out a vision, one of the most detailed visions in this entire election cycle because I think that council members need to come with ideas. And I think that we have a lengthy list to do. I look forward to getting to work on it. And so whether it is economic development, whether it is our, our standards for open space and our environmental protection, whether it is Reform in City Hall, whether it is just making sure that we have housing options for our young people, all of that and above is what we're going to need to get to work on. And it's going to take bridging that gap to the next generation.
Thank you. We're really just about out of time, so I'm going to ask the timer to reset at one minute. And it's not enough time for each of you. The question is about this issue that has been going on in the community and around the state, Black Lives Matter, racial inequality. And also, the, the question in particular that is saying bullying is an issue within the city and some local organizations. So this is not about the council being bullied. It's about people who feel they live in the city and they feel they're being bullied. How do you plan to address this, especially since September is Anti-Bullying Month? And DeeDee, I'm sorry, it's one minute. That's all we can give you. But please share with us your thoughts about bullying and Black Lives Matter and racial inequality.
The anti-bullying is, is very important as well as racial equality. But the Anti-Bullying is Anti-Bullying Month. Our police department is available. They're, they're having open forums. So I'm hoping anybody in the community can move forward and, and attend those meetings and share any concerns that they might have. Bullying tends to be a lot in schools also. My daughter is a school counselor, a middle school counselor. And so they're addressing the bullying issue there. It starts at home, it starts at work, it starts in our community. We all need to take a stand against it. I'll never forget the, the first time I actually stood up and, and to a bully that was bullying somebody else. The, the person was working very hard and doing his best he could. The lady behind me started just commenting on his ethnicity and other things. And I just turned around to her and I said, what gives you the right to say those negative things to this nice person? He's working hard. That's what we need him to do. Sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, we don't have enough time. Phil, same question to you about dealing with bullying within the city, Black Lives Matter, racial inequality. Phil, you're muted, so we'll wait for you to unmute and then we'll start the call.
I apologize. Thank you. I don't think it should be controversial to say that black people's lives matter. It should be easy for us to say because they do. This isn't a high bar. But the unfortunate reality is that the way that black people have been treated in our society makes this rallying cry of Black Lives Matter a necessary one. They're subject to discrimination in housing, education, hiring practices, delivery of healthcare. I could go on and on. And so when we talk about Black Lives Matter, it's not just a police issue. It's, in fact, that's just one small part of it. It's, as a society, it's systemic and we need to do something about it. And I've talked in previous question or previous question about what I would do about it. As far as bullying, I'm proud to see the, the youth council just address this in the last city council meeting. I think we need to exhibit behavior at all levels of leadership to show what it looks like when a bully, bullying someone else and, and show behavior that is respectful to one another. So we need to model the behavior, but we also need to address it in schools and I'm glad to see it's being addressed.
Thank you. Elaine, we'll hear your thoughts, please, on this matter.
It is clear that all Black Lives Matter. And that is from the unborn black child to the elderly black person. As I mentioned, my, I have wonderful black people in my family that I love dearly. And there's a rallying cry to be sure that everyone is treated equally and fairly. And so I joined that, that we must continue, must do all that we can to be sure that all lives matter with equal attention. Now, I recognize that, that sometimes choices are made or actions occur that can be discriminatory or, or prejudicial. And when that happens, we need, we must state these acts that have occurred and we must find a way to rectify them, resolve them. In fact, that's really, that ties what, what goes on with bullying. In fact, I had a child who ran home from school because of what was happening in his, at that moment. We must take a stance. I'm appreciative that the, our youth council is, is made their rallying cry for this month. We need to be aware of our community as a whole. We have a wonderful mixed community. We need to support them all. All lives matter and Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. And Ryan will wrap up this question with you.
Well, thank you, David. Well, absolutely, the Black Lives Matter movement has been a conversation that has gone into every single community. It's forced a conversation, sometimes comfortable, sometimes uncomfortable. And we know that this has happened within our city council. We know that this has happened within our police department. And we've seen positive changes. There was a policy manual change that happened because of, you know, constituents bringing these concerns to light. And going forward, there's conversations to be, continue to have, whether it's on ensuring funding for our body cameras, whether it is ensuring that our police officers have the training that they need, making sure that we have the outreach between the, our police department and the community. And myself, as a council member, being that bridge to all stakeholders in the community. And when it comes to the bullying aspect, I, I really am so happy that the youth council has taken this up. It's going to be a great partnership, maybe in the future, that we could do with the school district, with the city council, with the park district, all of the above, to get an awareness campaign about this issue.
Thank you. That concludes our questions. We're now going to move to the closing statements. Elaine, you'll be up first, so you have a minute and a half when you're ready.
Thank you. This has been a great opportunity to speak to constituents and voters in District Three. I call District Three the- I call District Three the footprint of Simi Valley. It goes from, from Sycamore to Royal up Madera, scoops up and grabs them all. It is diverse, wonderful community of people that love and live and grow together. And, and I have been honored to have been appointed to the city council just over a year and a half ago. I, I ask fervently for your vote that I might do some of the exciting things that I see that we can do for our community. Simi Valley is an embrace of community. It offers so much and there's so much that can be done. Interesting that, Ryan, we mentioned body cameras. Those came about because I lobbied on the city council and made sure that it happened with a split vote, that I felt that it was a way to protect our citizens, a way to protect our police officers. There's more of those good things that can be done for our community. I recognize that right now, this is a difficult time with COVID-19. It breaks my heart that individuals have lost jobs, that businesses have lost livelihoods. The first and most important thing we must do is put security, put safety protocols in place so that we can get back to business, that people can get back to work, that they can live and enjoy their own livelihood. I pledge that that is my goal right now and going forward, to make that happen. I recognize that in this forum of Zoom, we can't have riotous applause for our candidates, which is kind of fun. But know that right now, I want to make a difference for you and I love Simi Valley. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Our next candidate is DeeDee Kavanaugh.
Thank you, David. First off, I want to really thank all the other candidates here. This has been a great forum. And thank you to, again, to the League of Women Voters. The questions were very thought provoking. And we got a lot of good responses and some good answers. I've been honored to be on the city council for the past, past four years. And I feel that upcoming four years are going to be even more difficult for us as a community and as a city. My past experience, then, now, and my work experience are going to give me the knowledge and the background to help us move forward in all the different ways. I'm going to continue to have the same goals that I've had the past, ensuring that our Simi Valley remains one of the safest cities to live in. Our crime rates now are lower than we were known as the safest city in America. That needs to continue. We're going to need to offer businesses our support 100% in order for them to survive this pandemic. I'm working on that with my work job. I'll be able to share that information here. And I also sit on the Economic Development Collaborative for the county, which is reaching out and assisting over 4,000 businesses. We also need to work on our social issues. That's a strong, a strong area this year. And in the coming years, that we as a council are going to need to work together in order to keep Simi Valley moving forward. So I ask for your vote. I want to keep Simi Valley a great place to raise our families.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ryan Valencia, District Three.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters, once again, for having this forum. It has been incredibly constructive. And I hope that you've been able to gather enough information to formulate what these visions are that we have ahead of you. If you, if you want to learn more, my website is ryanvalencia.org. Please visit. So I know that there's so many questions that we didn't touch upon. But you know, it just, I'm really excited to do going forward is really get to know every single constituent here in the third district. You know, I'm a product of this community. I went to Sinaloa and Royal High School that are both located in my district. I'm proud to always show off that four of my five mother siblings live just in the third district in Simi Valley. My roots run deep here. So as a homegrown candidate, you know, my big goal is to make sure that the promise of what Simi Valley is growing up here continues for the future. And I hope to bridge the gap. I hope to be the council member that asks the tough questions about the long-term impacts of the decisions that we make today. And additionally, I've just been so honored to serve as district director for the 30th Assembly District to deliver for Simi Valley, whether it was $700,000 that I worked with the Assemblywoman to deliver to the free clinic of Simi Valley, that we've pushed on tougher standards for our drinking water when it comes to perchlorated contaminant that has had many people worried across the city. You know, and, or, or just the active casework that we've done in this community. I hope that I continue, can continue to be the accessible council member that I think I'll be. And I look forward to just the opportunity to continue these forums for the next week that we have.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Phil Loose.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters. This has been a great, productive forum. I know a minute thirty is not a lot of time to go into depth on a lot of these issues. So I'll echo what Ryan said. My website is philloose.com. I have all my policies up there. If you'd like to go take a look, the research behind why I believe what I believe. And I think that represents a lot of who I am. It is, you'll see these policies have reasons behind them. And as Ryan had said earlier, we need to bring ideas to the council. And I think on the ballot that arrives at your home next week, in the choice in District One is between doing things the way they've always been done, despite the lack of some results, or doing things in a new way that can allow our city to, to grow and thrive and adapt to the modern times. There's no use in hanging on to what was. It's time to open ourselves up to what could be. My opponent has talked about her experience and experience is great. But what good is experience if you don't use it to make a difference? I think we should be making more of a difference and we should expect more. I think I've demonstrated my work ethic, my character, my commitment throughout my campaign, throughout my career. And I bring all those same characteristics to the council. And I'll just end with this. I love Simi Valley. Simi Valley's been great to me and to my family. I deeply want that to be the case for everyone. We have to acknowledge that real challenges exist and that the consequences of failing to solve those challenges is that real, actual people will suffer. And that is a call to action and that call needs to be met with the urgency that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. So candidates, thank you very much for being willing to run, willing to serve. We have a special presentation from the League of Women Voters for just a couple of moments, so please stand by while I share my screen and start this little PowerPoint. So the League of Women Voters reminds everybody about the importance of this election. You have multiple options. Every registered voter will be receiving a ballot in the mail. You can return that ballot through the postal service or what, a convenient ballot drop-off box or at one of many voting centers that'll be set up around the city and the county. In fact, you'll be able to go to any voting center if you wish to vote in person. You don't have to go to the one near your house. Ballots will be mailed out beginning around October 2nd. You'll see them then the following week. Dropbox is open on October 6th. You can drop them off anywhere. If you don't receive a ballot by October 6th, 16th, please contact the Elections Division. Now, the League of Women Voters Ventura County recommends that everyone target sending in their ballot by October 20th, if you plan to mail in your ballot. That'll ensure the post office has enough time to get it to the county and make sure that it's postmarked. One of the important things about your ballot is to remember that if you are sending in a mail-in ballot, you must sign it. Make sure you do that important step. Now ballots will be counted after Election Day. As long as a ballot is postmarked by Election Day, it can be counted up until November 20th. So don't expect to see final results the day after the election. There may be some counting going on in various parts of the state and even the nation. So we'll all have to be a little patient. There are some incredible resources available to you. Where'smyballot.sos.ca.gov is a way to track that your ballot is moving through the system. Every ballot has a unique ID. You can find out if it's been accepted by the post office, if it's still with the post office, has it made its way to the registrar? So you can register and follow that. Votersedge.org/CA is another great resource where you can put in your address and find out about all the candidates that are running in your area. You can also learn more about ballot propositions. And of course, the League of Women Voters of Ventura County encourages you to visit our website to learn more as well. A video of this performance tonight or this forum will be available within 48 hours on our website. The same place you went to register, you can now go and watch any of the videos. And there are more forums coming. We, we're not even a third of the way through. So with that, I want to take a moment to thank all of our volunteers. Pat Essex, the head of Voter Services, Ruby, Maddie, Betsy Patterson, you met earlier. I'd like to thank them, like to thank candidates. And it was mentioned tonight about our first responders. I think we all have to extend our great gratitude to our first responders and our essential workers who are continuing to work during the pandemic. With that, we have another forum starting in 10 minutes with the candidates for Simi Valley Mayor. Thank you for watching and we'll all say good night.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.